Good evening, Garden City. I'd like to call to order regular city council meeting from Monday, March 17th, 2025 at 7:00 PM. Our first order of business is our opening ceremony, which consists of the National Anthem, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence for those servicemembers who have given their lives for our country. If everyone would please rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Smith, if you take roll call, please.
Mayor Jacob.
Here.
Mayor Protem Dold.
Here.
Councilmember Hughes.
Here.
Councilmember Witt.
Here.
Councilmember King.
Here.
Councilmember Dold.
Here.
Councilmember Karafodas.
Here.
You have a quorum of seven.
Okay, thank you. Item four is approval of the agenda.
Mayor.
Councilmember Witt.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the Monday, March 17th agenda as presented.
Support. Support for Mayor Protem Dold. Further comments from table? From the public? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 7-0. We have no recognitions. Comments from state and county officials, I don't think I saw any in here. We do have a presentation, and that is for Jody's. So, as you know, back in January, that's how long we've been trying to give this plaque out, but Jody's hosted their 20th anniversary of Broomstick Pool. And it's a tournament, and they raise money, and they donate it to our Garden City Home Pat Pantry, which Ms. Ryback here runs, and Pat Squires is filling in for Kathy from Jody's because she cannot be here. So, they are gonna, Pat is gonna present a check for $2,710.
$2,710.
To the food pantry. Stick around. And then we do have a plaque for Jody's that we will get to Kathy at a later date, but it says basically, "On behalf of the mayor and its city council, we sincerely thank you for your generous donation to our home pantry. Your support directly benefits Garden City residents and Garden City public school students and their families in need. The home pantry is a vital resource, ensuring no family in our community goes without food and essential supplies. Your generosity reflects a spirit of kindness and unity that makes Garden City a great place to live. We deeply appreciate your commitment to helping others and recognize the difference you are making. Thank you for your generosity and dedication to supporting our community." And again, this was the 20th year that they've been doing this tournament and raising money most of the years for the food pantry. So, I will get this over to Kathy when she gets back in town. But thank you both for doing what you do. We also have another one that's not on our schedule there. Tonight, on behalf of council and myself, we would like to recognize Public Works Director Brad Omen for an incredible 40 years of service with the city of Garden City. So, we have a plaque and also a little thing to read. Not many employees have joined the 40-plus club in Garden City, and Brad's dedication, leadership, and commitment to the city are truly commendable. Brad has worked his way through every position in Garden City's public works, starting as a custodian in 1985. Since then, working through the ranks as an equipment operator, EO2, meter reader, EO3, crew leader, supervisor, and since 2019, serving as the department director and doing a great job. Brad's impact goes far beyond his tenure with the city. Many know Brad for his quick response and willingness to talk with residents. In a recent post about Brad, we received over 50 comments personally congratulating Brad and thanking him for his service to the city. Brad and his team have streamlined efficiencies within the department, improving operations, and ensuring that services are delivered effectively to our residents. Thank you, Brad, for four decades of hard work, innovation, and dedication to keeping Garden City running smoothly. Please join us in congratulating him on this well-earned milestone. I'd like to thank the mayor and council for this. I think the key to longevity in any job is, well, you gotta be on work on time every day. Do your job to the best of your ability, but the most important thing is you gotta enjoy what you're doing, and I can say I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Brad.
Okay, we have another presentation. That's gonna be from our Community Development Director, DDA Director, Mr. Matt Miller. What's that?
Yes.
Okay, we'll take a quick one-minute, two-minute break and let DPS guys, if they want to leave. If they want to leave. Okay, and we are back in session. So, as I said, we have another presentation from our Community Development Director, DDA Director, Mr. Matt Miller.
Hi. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. I wanted to talk to you about a few items tonight. The first is regarding the sidewalk gap program. And at your place, as I put a memo along with a map, and the map is projected up on the screens right now regarding kind of our sidewalk grant program. As you can recall, at the last council meeting, you approved the agreement, and with the agreement was part of the implementation of how we're gonna go forward with that, with the program. After we had the meeting, though, I did work on executing the grant, getting the grant documentation, executing the grant, and then also I started to submit for the first drawdown on the grant money so that we would have kind of the seed money to start the program and look at engineering and design of all of that, too. So, that is kind of what I did from the last meeting and then going forward kind of from this meeting. Part of how the map was developed is that DPW had a spreadsheet of kind of where sidewalks are not, and then also we had the sidewalks that were installed via, the ordinance that was in place for sidewalks to be installed at homes at rental properties and for sale structures in the city. I took those, I merged them together, and then we kind of created another spreadsheet. And then that, of course, we took that spreadsheet and then applied that via GIS to that map that you see in front of you. So, it kind of created a dot by address of where there are not sidewalks in the city. And so, so as you can see, when I was talking, I was kind of, I did talk about that southwest quadrant of the city and that it shows that there's a lot of dots there, of course. And that was kind of how we were looking at, you know, where we would start, where we would start the implementation of the program. As you know, the parameters of the grant are that by next December of 2026, we have to have all the grant funds expended, and that really is kind of two construction seasons for us because, of course, you can't lay cement in the wintertime. As we kind of go forward and we look at the implementation, we kind of identified that, of course, the southwest quadrant is where we would start, and then we would kind of go east, south of Ford Road, as we do the bid package for this first round. One of the things that we have to be cognizant about is that the great, you know, the need is great and the amount of money, you think 2.5 million is a lot of money, but when you break it down to about 900 houses that don't have sidewalks, we are probably not going to get through the entire city of being able to install sidewalks in front of every home because of the costs involved. And also, when we're looking at kind of trying to set the bid package up, we need to remember that we need to stay in these quadrants as the contractor moves forward because mobilization, of course, it costs more for a contractor to go around the city, to go here, here, here. If they start on one street, they can kind of finish that street and they can go forward. And of course, we're preparing the bid documents, but I wanted to kind of just talk about that, you know, for the most part, we will be looking at the location of the sidewalk, the sidewalk design, right-of-way clearances. And when I say clearances, I mean kind of encroachments. Once we have determined where the real right-of-way is, there will possibly be encroachments, landscaping, some trees, mailboxes, sprinkler systems, all of those things are kind of what we call encroachments into the right-of-way. We'll also be looking at drainage issues, culverts, ditches, the ADA requirements for sidewalk connections, the slope. What's important with ADA connection is that you have to address the slope. So, at the, say at the intersection, you have kind of the connection of the ADA ramp, but sometimes the slope of the original sidewalk, you have to start further back on the sidewalk to start that slope, so it's a gradual decline for the slope. Of course, we talked about trees, the preservation of trees, and then fire hydrants, and all of those things that will be part of what we'll be looking at each of these addresses as we go forward. It's not as simple as say, okay, put a sidewalk here. We're going to have to address many issues with a lot, a lot of properties in the city. We know that, you know, a good portion of people will be like, it's just a sidewalk we're putting in and moving on, but there will be cases where we have, you know, certain things that we have to address with each of these installations. We also did talk about people who didn't wish to have the sidewalk put in, and it may not be a blanket, you don't want it, you don't have to have it. You know, part of the grant was that we were going to look at schools, the walkways to schools, and those are items that we'll have to do. Also, what if this was a person that was the only house on the whole block that didn't have it? It would really make no sense where we would prefer to have them opt out of the program. We also, part of our first bid package, we did look at, you know, south of Ford Road, there are four schools within that area, and some of the school property itself or the right-of-way near the schools has no sidewalks. We'll be addressing those areas, too. We haven't, we also talked about not having the connections to the, in the county or state right-of-way. We're going to be focusing on the city right-of-way first, and then also those connections to the county roads, if possible. So, it's a lot, you know, a lot to begin. We do have Hennessy engineers kind of beginning the bid package. Bucelli has been out identifying the intersections. I know that at one of the meetings, Ms. Skoroff talked about how there's no connection to a side, to the street at all. We have sidewalks, but you have to kind of jump a ditch. And so, we've identified all of those locations, south of Ford Road, so that in the bid package, we'll be putting out a bid package, we'll say sidewalk at four inches thick is this much, sidewalks at six inches deep is this much, and then also we will identify those intersections because it will, of course, involve ADA requirements, but also we may have some drainage, culverts. Those things will have to be added into the bid documents so that we can, you know, have a good bid that we're going out with so that we can get started. Like I said, we have two construction seasons. We're almost a little behind this season. A lot of contractors, cement people have their work lined up. We're going to go out for bid, though, as soon as possible to begin the implementation of this. We will, of course, have the bids before you when we have them prepared, so.
So, anyone from council have a question?
I do.
Councilmember Karafodas.
When we put out the bid, it's gonna be for all of these. You said we're not gonna be able to do all 900 houses, but we're not doing it by quadrant, right? Where the bid's gonna be for like, hey, you're gonna do two years' worth of work and maybe 700 houses, right?
Well, we're gonna, actually, the first bid is for south of Ford Road from Radcliffe to Inkster. So, we're gonna keep it in the one quadrant. Or, well, that's actually, it's three quadrants. We have six quadrants that we define in the city. It'll be for the first three, is our plan.
I'm just asking because you think if someone was gonna bid on something and they said we're gonna give a bid for the whole city for 700 sidewalks, it would be cheaper than them bidding for 300 sidewalks? So, we might get a better price if they bid for everything.
We're concerned that their capacity, they won't be able to handle the capacity is our issue.
You don't think we'll get bigger, larger companies if it's a bigger bid?
I don't know.
Does Mr. Bucellino?
I don't know. We can, we can look back and, we can, we can look to see if that would be a possibility. I don't know.
I'm just saying, the more work, the cheaper it's gonna be for us and the more that we could possibly get done.
Yeah. Well, we also, what may happen, I don't know, is the contractor that's doing also the sidewalk repair, you know, the trip hazard program, if they bid, you know, they'll be kind of be working kind of in the same block. So, of course, we'll reach out to them, make sure that they get the bid package, to see if they're interested in bidding. That may help us with the reduction and may give us a better bid number for that, too. So.
I know a lot of people are also concerned what you said about the connection where there's ditches. Do we have a plan? Like you said, is everybody gonna get a culver there and then get the sidewalk over that, or?
That's probably how it'll be addressed, yeah. So, and that, of course, is extra money, there's gravel, compaction, all of that, too. So.
So, when do you think we are putting things out to bid?
I'm hoping by mid-April we'll have the bid package out, and the end of April we'll have it back.
And it's out for two weeks?
Mm-hmm.
Thanks, Matt.
Councilmember Dold.
A quick one. You were, you were speaking about the encroachments and personal encroachments like mailboxes, things that are owned by that homeowner. Is there a way to have them take on the cost of moving those items so that that doesn't eat into the grant?
Sure. We can look at that. So, and specifically, you know, the mailbox, I'm not 100% concerned about, but the sprinkler systems, I'm very concerned about. And that can get costly and it can run into more problems. So, we're gonna identify those, you know, when, when the contractor's there and we're looking at it, you know, we're gonna know exactly where they're all at, but we will discuss that, that it might not be part of the project, so.
Okay. Mayor, I have one more question.
Councilmember Karafodas, go ahead.
I know when we did some newer sidewalks like down Henry Rough by the park at Wild, Maplewood, we did some kind of zigzagging to go around some poles and trees, and it looks okay. And I know a lot of people were concerned about that, so we're gonna make an effort to, if someone has a 200-year-old oak tree, that maybe we could go around it or something like that. Okay, I know a lot of people in that area between Hubbard and Maryman, there's a couple houses there that it's just trees right up to the, I can't imagine how we can even put a sidewalk in because we have to cut down 30 trees in their lot just to get through. So, I know some people are already asking about that.
Yes. I, you know, I addressed it about preservation of trees, and as you know, I love trees. So, but we talked about, you know, what, what parameters, what guideline we will give to, how close can the sidewalk go to this, you know, go to the roadway, you know, how much can it go around the tree without harming the root structure, all of that. So, any kind of encroachments for the sidewalk, say that zigzag or whatever, we're gonna try to push, obviously, onto the public right-of-way.
Is it possible if the homeowner signs off? If they say, yeah, we want a sidewalk, but we wanna leave the street, that it could come in instead of out? Like, it'd be too close to the street, they could sign off and say, yes, it can come on our property?
We would have to get an easement to do so. And I did talk to the city attorney just about some blanket easements that we could use. So, we haven't gotten anything established yet, but I thought about that, too.
Okay, thank you, Matt.
Councilmember Hughes.
Ms. Miller, good evening.
Hi.
Quick question. Are there any costs that wouldn't be covered by the grant, such as easements and sprinklers and trees and what, you know, all the things that might go into replacing a sidewalk?
The, I'm not 100% sure, but the, you know, the writing, the description of the grant was that we're gonna install sidewalks, and I don't think we got into the nitty-gritty of all of that. But part of installing a sidewalk is restoration, so seed, dirt, all of that, and so I, I'm not sure if we'd be able to cover all of that in the grant.
Mayor. Councilmember King.
Hey, Matt, you said the first quadrant, just to confirm, is it Radcliffe to Inkster, Ford Road to Cherry Hill?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, half. You said total is about 900 approximately homes without missing sidewalk. Do you know how many are in that quadrant? It looks like the majority, but I didn't know.
Correct. I'm not 100%. We didn't do a dot count south of Ford Road, so we don't have that, so.
Okay, just curious.
You know, but then, you know, if, you know, when we get to the end of the summer and what we've got going, you know, then we will look at, you know, going north of Ford Road and looking at those highest concentration areas to go forward, you know, kind of the east, you know, just, just west of Inkster, north of Ford, there's a big, a large mound over in that quadrant, then along Dawson Street, all of that, too. So, we're looking at, you know, kind of those concentrated areas, because we, we have to be expeditious, but we also have to be, you know, kind of poignant where we're putting, you know, where we're allocating the dollars so that we can get the most. And also, when you have clusters of the dots, it also helps with the mobilization and the cost of the concrete and the installation, so.
More comments, questions from the table? Okay. Carry on, number, item two.
Be looking forward to that, and then we're, of course, you know, this summer, we're gonna start the program and we're gonna get moving, all right? Thank you. My next item is the Lucky Squirrel, and I know there's gonna be up there on there. We want to, of course, invite the entire community to the Lucky Squirrel Craft and Vendor event, which is May 17th, 19th, and the 20th in downtown Garden City. We still have some spaces for vendors, so if you're interested in becoming a vendor, you can contact me at 734-793-1640, or you can look for the application on our website. Fill that out, and you pay here at City Hall. What we're doing for the first Lucky Squirrel event, May 17th, we're calling it Bag Day. And so, you're going to be able to get a free bag if you join the email list. And so, through the email list, you're going to register your email with us, and then we will send you a QR code. You'll show the QR code at the event, and then you'll be able to get a free shopping bag there. One of the things that we're doing, of course, we won't sell your email, we just wanna use, we want to start to build an email so that we can communicate with you about the events that are going on, of course, in downtown, in, in the city. And also, it's a good way to, of course, get the bag and fill it at the event so that you'll be able to shop and support all the vendors at that event. The bag is gonna have like a little squirrel on it, and I don't know if Zach has a little squirrel, but we're calling the squirrel Zeffy, so that's gonna be our, I thought it was a great name, because Zeffy is the program, actually, that we use to register the email, and you'll get your QR code, it'll be from zeffy.com. So, on this, so look for the Lucky Squirrel and the Lucky Squirrel bag at the event, and of course, register your email, and then come and join us on that first event on May 17th to get your Zeffy the squirrel back, right?
Thank you. And last one, Banner Program.
I was hoping they had the squirrel, though. It's really kind of a cute squirrel. But I was, you'll see, you'll see it soon. So, the next item, I just wanted to talk to you, address the community, that we're doing the Hometown Hero program again this year, and I was just letting the council know that we have a few spots left, actually, this year. We have a capacity of 40. We have a few spots left. I wanted to just do another commercial to remind people to turn in their applications and get me their pictures so that I can get this all off to the printer and get them ready for Memorial Day, all right? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Lot of stuff going on. Community events. I'm gonna call up our Garden City Business Lines President, Ms. Jackie Peridore, talking about music in the park.
See more stuff going on. Hello, mayor and council. I just received our Save the Date cards. I put a stack over here if anybody in the room would like to take them, whatever's left, if Mr. Smith would set them out in the City Hall, we would love it. The dates this year are June 19th, July 17th, August 21st. We have Sinjin Smith coming back, we have Smith Vector coming back, which are Garden City bands, but in July, we're gonna have Magic Boss. They are a larger band with a larger following. We are anticipating maybe 200, 300 people more in July than normal. We are also encouraging everyone to dress hippie-like, especially for July. And I have one more thing on the back. If you wanted to be a vendor or a sponsor, the information is there. Any service organization in the city, or of course, any business that would like to promote themselves, this is the place to be, and I do have a challenge. We have the Bisbee. We now have the squirrel. I have to dress like a bee. So, I think Mr. Miller... So I think Mr. Miller should dress, and it's a challenge. Thank you.
That would be interesting, entertaining. Okay. One more community event. For those of you that were lucky enough to come out Saturday night, I will call up Lieutenant Michael Hull to talk about the big game. As tall as you.
So last Saturday, we hosted the Westland Fire Department over at the ice arena in a charity hockey game. We were victorious. We almost doubled up the score on them. They got a late one, so it ended up eight and five. It was a great event. We raised $2,782 between us and the Westland Fire Department. We decided to split that in half. This year, we're going to give our portion of it, over $1,300, almost $1,400, to the home pantry this year. I don't have a fancy big check, which I wanted, but maybe in the future. But we plan on, we're already in discussions to have a couple more hockey games, one at their place, another one here, and share it amongst the other charities within the town. It was a great event, and we appreciate everybody that came out and supported us throughout the event.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
It was a... Okay. We do have a public hearing, and this is on ordinance amendment on amusements. Mr. Smith.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So before you is a proposed amendment to our amusement ordinance regarding carnivals and outdoor festivals. This is kind of a collaborative effort between the Clerk's Office, Ordinance, PD, Fire, Parks and Rec, Community Development. We're all scattered throughout here. Just touch on a couple of the highlights for this. One of the sections, we removed the Parks and Rec Department out of the license issuing requirements, because currently, as it's written, it's the Parks and Rec Department that approves the outdoor festivals, even if it's not on city property. So we've taken that out to do it through the PD. We have replaced subjective language from Section 116.091. It currently says about interfering with the peaceful quiet of the neighborhood. That varies from person to person. What might disrupt me may not disrupt somebody else. So we basically have put the language in there that if it interferes with the expected use and access to your property, so if a carnival sets up and you can no longer get into your driveway, or you can't get out, you know, because of the traffic congestion, then that's a more, you know, objective, like, you know, proof to that. So we've changed the language there. We've limited carnivals to no more than five days per year on one location, and only one carnival operating within the city at any one time. That way, it kind of keeps the carnivals from cannibalizing each other on that front. We have also put in, just because in today's world that we're living in, public safety, you know, is hugely important. Any large gathering could become a target for people who want to do harm, where we are requiring the carnival operators to provide local law enforcement on site so they can respond to things. So that's now a requirement for anyone looking to have a carnival in the city. We have also required a completed and signed application and all bonds and fees to be paid in advance of any license being issued, kind of in the past. It's kind of, well, we'll get the process started, and then we'll, you know, follow up later. This way, it's like, no, they're going to comply with everything that they're required to do before we start with anything. And then we've also put in, to kind of speed up the process, in case things are not going well on the site. Currently, the way the ordinance is written is if we, carnival opens Friday night, there's 20 fights, and it's just not a good environment, and it needs to be shut down. Right now, the ordinance requires council to have a hearing before we can suspend or revoke a license. So if something happens on Friday night and we need to stop it, we can't without council meeting to revoke that. So we've changed that to allow us to address it more quickly. And then we've also increased, put in additional penalties for carnivals who operate without getting approval, or if we suspend or revoke their license, they continue to operate. We put the penalties in there to kind of put some bite to it, where if it's not financially inconvenient for them to not run, they're not going to, you know, adhere to what we tell them to do. So it's a larger penalty, but as long as they're compliant with the rules and regulations, you know, it's basically to protect us against the bad actors who don't follow through with the procedures. So that's the basic overview of that. If you have any questions, I can help you out.
I think we open it to the public first, and then when it comes into the action item, we'll take comments from the table. So at this time, I'll open up the public hearing to anyone that wishes to speak on this amendment. Anybody from the public wishing to speak on this? Okay. I will close the public hearing. Item 11 is our consent agenda.
Mayor.
Councilmember Witt.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda items A, 1 through 4 as presented.
Support. Support from Mayor Protem Dole. Comments from the table?
Mayor.
Councilmember Hughes.
Mr. Smith, I have a question. In the paperwork, it says that the person, that the applicant shall provide all sufficient evidence that they, you know, that they checked with the property.
So this is on the consent agenda now?
Wait a minute. We're on the consent agenda. That's okay. Any comments on the consent agenda from the public? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Okay, action items. First item is the amusement amendment. We'll look for motion, then we can have discussion.
Mayor.
Councilmember Witt.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the attached amendment to Chapter 116 of the Garden City Code of Ordinances, amending Section 116.090 through 116.092, and creating Section 116.093, addressing carnivals, festivals, and amusement rides.
Support.
Support from Councilmember Carefotos. Okay, comments from the table?
Mayor.
Councilmember Hughes.
Sorry about that.
That's okay.
In Section 091, Regulations, it says that the applicant must provide sufficient evidence, you know, that they've checked with property owners. What type of evidence are we talking about?
So they would normally get a written, you know, documentation from any, not just the property owners, property owners and business owners. Because if they're leasing, you know, they want to make sure they're clear with that. But it would be written documentation.
Do we have a form?
Signed by the owner.
Do we have a form for that, or?
I believe that when we had our meeting, we were working to redo our forms and note it.
Good. And then also, the revocation of license under 092? And then who would be revoking the license?
So that could come from our law enforcement, some PD, if they deem it an unsafe environment. You know, because of the provision where they're required to have law enforcement personnel on site, like they're the eyes and ears on the ground there, best equipped to respond to that.
Okay. And then the original license request now goes to PD instead of?
So, yeah, so it was, for the past couple of years, records has received the applications, even though the ordinance said Parks and Rec, but it was kind of one of those things where it wasn't, you know, they kind of saw that a while ago, they're like, why are we doing this? So it's been handled through records. This is just to kind of clean up that language.
Okay. Thank you.
Mayor, hold on. Councilmember Dole. This Councilmember Dole.
This one, okay. Just a quick question. It says, addressing carnivals, festivals, and amusement rides. You keep referring to carnivals, though. So are we speaking about festivals that have a carnival present?
So, or outdoor festivals in general, if they don't have carnival, you know, so it's kind of anything that, you know, could have games or things like that. If it's a city, the one difference on that is if it's a city sanctioned event, you know, like the question came out, like Music in the Park, like how does this affect Music in the Park?
Right.
It doesn't, you know, this is for outside of that. But it doesn't necessarily have to have amusement rides, but it does cover those that do have rides.
Okay, so would this, would this fall under the city manager's, what's the word I want? Your spectrum to come in and override any of this in regards to nonprofits?
If we're speaking for those that occur on city property, certainly, we have the ability to allow anything that we're regulating through our use of our own property. And I think that's one of the reasons that, you know, this applies to those that are outside of city control and not occurring on city property, such as just, you know, open parking lot. That's why, actually, part of the reason you removed the Parks and Rec from that part of it, because actually, once you're off their property, they really have little to do with it. It falls on the rest of the city regulatory agencies to sort of deal with it. So when it's on city property, it falls within our normal Parks and Rec and city use, which falls under me.
Okay, thank you.
Ultimately. So that's a long way to answering the question, sorry.
Got it, though. Thank you.
Mayor Protem Dole.
Oh, sorry.
Yes, Section 1C, any carnival operating within the city shall require to provide law enforcement at their expense. Are we talking about our law enforcement?
Correct, yes.
And is it from time open to time close?
Correct.
Thank you.
Councilmember Carefotos.
Along that same thing with the law enforcement, we've never required that before, correct?
From my understanding, I think some of them have used their own security, outside security that they've hired and brought in, so.
And then how is, maybe the chief or our city manager can answer. I know it says that, you know, we determine how many police officers we need. Is that something that we have them pay ahead of time, like a carnival's coming in Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, and our chief says, "We need six officers a day, and it's this amount," and they have to prepay that, like with their license fee?
That is something we could explore in terms of if they're going to prepay in advance, or if it's based upon how many we needed on-site throughout.
And do we need to put in here that it's, it just says, "Provide for law enforcement," but like we have another festival in town that provides law enforcement, but they have the sheriff? Do we have, do we need to say Garden City Law Enforcement?
I think ultimately, the purview falls under the Garden City Police Department to determine what's needed and what constitutes law enforcement. So I know if we don't think that the security they're providing is adequate, then it wouldn't meet the definition of this section, meaning that, you know, ultimately, it's the number of officers required to be determined by, is ultimately them saying, hey, is it adequate what you're providing or not, and we'll get a say in that. And if it's, hey, you need to hire our guys because we don't believe that you're proposing anything adequate, then, you know, I notice in the very next section, there's a $1,000 bond right off the bat. They could say, you know, first, I'd like to be paid upfront, of course, but we also have a $1,000 bond required that they forfeit if they fail to do it as well, so.
So they're not all required to have law enforcement, just we're going to deem whether their security is good enough?
They're to provide for their expense, but yep, the number of officers required shall be determined by the police department, but so the number of officers could be zero, but it could be 10. It could be anywhere in between, just based on the scope of what they're proposing.
Okay, thank you.
So like St. Maryfield, St. Thomas, they do theirs with the Wayne County sheriffs, that would be adequate, right?
If our PD deems that.
Okay. Further comments from the table? From the public? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Okay, item two is special land use for 6071 Middlebelt, and I'll call Mr. Mario Ortega.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. Before you tonight is a request to establish a new use at 6071 Middlebelt Road. So this property is located on the west side of Middlebelt, at the intersection with Block Street. And the site was previously a Bank of America branch, and has since been reoccupied as an office for Paramount Accounting Services. The accounting office is actually one division of the applicant's companies that primarily operates, and the parent company primarily operates healthcare-related businesses. So tonight, the applicant is requesting to establish a childcare center at this site as one of the other businesses it operates. With us tonight is Julnar Salman and Eric Alzahrawi from the parent company, and they're here tonight, any questions, to answer any questions you might have. So the site is Zoned C2, community business, and within the C2 district, childcare centers do require special land use review prior to operating. On February 13th, the Planning Commission held a public hearing regarding the proposed use. At the hearing, there were actually no negative comments or concerns raised by residents or property owners. The applicant is also proposing to construct an addition to the building to create additional space, both for a future office tenant and of the proposed childcare center. The site plan was discussed as well at the same Planning Commission meeting. So at that meeting, the commission considered all the issues and has recommended that City Council grant special land use approval to the site. The Planning Commission did grant site plan approval, contingent among the applicant providing some revised site plan, addressing some minor informational details on that plan. So the council has the following options regarding the special land use. Option one, the council may make a determination that no additional discussion beyond tonight is necessary. Council would agree with the recommendation of the Planning Commission and grant final approval. Option two, council can choose to hold further discussion on this proposed use and request that a, that this item be added to a future agenda for discussion. Or option three, council may, can make a motion to deny the proposed use, having determined that the redevelopment site did not meet the specific requirements of the zoning ordinance for the proposed use. With that, I can answer any questions anytime, or we can have the applicant provide any answers for your questions.
Anyone have any questions?
I do.
I do.
Councilmember Dole, go ahead.
Do we know how many, how many children is the childcare facility expected to be able to accommodate?
They haven't indicated right now, but a childcare center license through the state of Michigan allows for 20 or more on the site. They have very specific requirements for the guards, do the size of the facility, and how many children are allowed there, not only by, based on the size of the site, but also the number of caregivers provided. So the applicant will be required, once this is, if this is approved, the applicant would be required to obtain a license from the state of Michigan, and they would have to meet all the state of Michigan's requirements.
Okay, but we know what's...
Right now, at this time, they haven't indicated the number that they'd be attempting to buy, to have on-site, number of children on-site.
Okay, but we do know how large the facility is.
Yes, that's correct.
But we have no idea how many children.
No, because, no, because that's, once again, based on the criteria of the state, and the size of the building is one factor. The number of employees that would be taking care of the children is the other factor.
Okay, well, the reason I ask is I'm a little concerned about any possible congestion with pickup and drop-off. And if any, I live over at Arcola and Ford Road, and wonderful facility there on Inkster Road, but the traffic is ridiculous. So, and this is right on Middlebelt, so it'd be a little concerning.
Well, the one benefit, I think, actually, that makes the site ideal is the fact that there's a, there's a stoplight right there. So all turning movements into and out of the site will be regulated by that stoplight. And in addition to that, we, the applicant will have to regulate and schedule the pickups and drop-offs for the area. But we also, when you take a look at the city itself, Middlebelt is pretty much the, like, a primary principal arterial that has the capacity to accommodate additional traffic, even more so, I would say, than Inkster. So between the size and traffic category of Middlebelt, and then the fact that there's a light there, there really would be no, I mean, this is one of the more ideal places to handle, be capable of handling that traffic. There will be increased traffic, but I believe it would be capable of handling that.
What? Here, why don't we ask the order?
Councilmember Hughes.
Evening. I watched the planning meeting on this, and it was brought up that you were discussing how the children would move from indoor to outdoor, and I didn't see any mention here about that. And is there, are there regulations, the way the children move within the building? Do you know? I mean, is it going to be addressed by the city, by the state, or?
Sorry. Yes, it will definitely have to be addressed by the applicant, because that'd be the question the state will have. They will have to make sure that the configuration of the building is, meets the state's requirements for safety for the children to move about. And then with regards to the child play area, there's a certain minimum number of square footage that has to be provided on-site for outdoor play area. The city, we ourselves have a criteria above and beyond that, but given the fact this is a childcare center, and if they have more than 20 children, it might be even bigger than what our minimum is. But in the end, the applicant does have a large amount of green space, either located to the north of the building or to the west of the building, even the addition, that would be capable of accommodating at least 5,000, if not more, square feet for... would be capable of accommodating at least 5,000, if not more, square feet for the, for an outdoor play area. And if, for some reason, they don't configure it to allow for that, then their license would not be approved by the state, and they wouldn't be able to have a center.
Okay, so the state has a final say whether they've met the criteria or not?
Absolutely, yeah. The state has the final say for that license.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Ortega, I'm sorry, I wasn't done when I was speaking with him earlier.
Go ahead.
Sorry about that.
That's okay. I was wondering if you could explain to me, though, as far as, what is, what's the traffic flow for drop-off and pickup?
So the state now requires that any child that goes into a facility, the parent, the person or responsible dropping off the child must park their vehicle, get out of the vehicle with the child, and walk the child into the facility. So back in the day, you might have heard or seen where a car pulls up, or there's circular traffic, or even like a school where a child hops out, that's not permitted anymore. As far as the best of my knowledge, the licensing for all these types of facilities no longer permit that. So in fact, so before, from a planning standpoint, we used to have to figure, try and figure out circulation routes for vehicles dropping off, stacking distances, especially at pickup time, because that, if that stacking lane gets too loud, too deep, then that's a problem. But since this is a childcare center under the Childcare Act, the best of my knowledge, they are not allowed to just have the child drop off and run into the school, turn into the facility. They must park their car, and they must walk the child into the facility.
So they've got approximately 58 parking spaces?
They do.
And that's to accommodate all these parents dropping kids off, plus the employees that will be working there?
That's correct. And if they do, if their proposed number of children that are being dropped off does not allow for enough parking space to accommodate the office use, then the use itself would have to be, the use statement, the, the use that we would approve at the city would have to be modified, because, you know, you're absolutely right. The parking has to accommodate the parking needs of the childcare center, not, and the parking needs of the current office, and any future parking needs for an office. Say, for example, they have a large number of children, and they max out their parking. Well, if they come in and then say, "Well, we'd like to open up this back part of the building that hasn't been used yet for an office," we'd have to say, "You'll have to adjust it accordingly to accommodate all the required parking."
Okay, so that is something that we would ask, how many children are currently there when they come, and they want to do something with the other existing office space that's being added?
Absolutely, because what will occur is, while this is a special land use approval, this is the first step. As we've discussed, they have to go through to get state and get their license, and even if, when they get their license, they do have to obtain a certificate of occupancy from the city. And part of that review will require zoning approval, and so the zoning approval will include making sure that the parking needs are met.
Okay.
And one other point of information, just for everyone I forgot to mention, that the special land use approval, if you were to grant it tonight, it is, does expire if they don't establish the use. If for some reason, they want to delay or don't have the ability to establish it within two years, then that approval expires, and they would have to start the approval process again. So say, for example, they just choose not to do it, or say, for example, they might have issues with obtaining a state license, and they don't obtain the state license and get our COO from the city within two years, then the approval expires, and they would have to go through the approval process again. So there are those, those additional catch-halls in the, in the ordinance to, to make sure that all the approvals are.
Okay, and the special land use will not be granted until they come up with the other contingency items that are being requested?
Excuse me, it won't become final until they, until they do it, because it is, it's, it is approved, but it is not valid until they obtain the, the use for, the COO for that use.
Mayor?
Are you done?
I'm done, thank you.
Councilmember Carafotas.
I have some similar questions, so there's the accounting service there now, they're going to add on to the building. The 57 spaces is what's there now, or what's there after they add on?
I believe 57 is what will be there after.
And so we have an accounting service, another office space, and the childcare, and I know there's some other areas that are very congested in the city, like Inkster and Cherry Hill area, where there's that strip mall where we let in all these businesses, and they all got the share of their parking spaces, and now everybody in the neighborhood complains because the parking is outrageous. So when we say 57 spaces, are we saying just for them, or the other two businesses included?
All the businesses on the site will have, actually, they have 52 spaces currently proposed. And then based on the addition that would be constructed onsite, and the current, and the reconfiguration of the existing parking lot, if all those are enacted, then they would have 52 parking spaces onsite for all three uses. Any uses on the site, any uses in the building, have to utilize those 52 spaces, and if some configuration exceeds that number, then they would, they would have to modify it accordingly to make sure that only, that the uses of the site are only 52. One other option could be, in theory, and I, you know, haven't looked into it, but in theory, they could expand the parking lot. There actually is additional square footage to the west of the site that, in theory, could be expanded. And, and for point of clarity, too, in theory, they could obtain a parking sharing agreement with another site.
Right, next door.
But that's not, yeah, like next door. But they would have to get an agreement, they'd have to be with, with the other property owner, and so anything along that line would have to get appropriate approvals before it could impact that parking.
And no, no on-street parking, correct?
No, not on Middlebelt, there's no parking.
No, no, but the side street is right there, and again, that's very congested between the police department, city hall, the fire department, the gaming place and that place, so.
So the intent is to make sure that, as proposed, and how, as they operate, and the information they provide us is for that particular site and the combination of uses? The fact is that, you know, those parkings, the adjacent public streets, if it's deemed public parking by the police department, then technically, anybody can park there.
Right, it doesn't mean it's safe, though. I mean, we've, we've all been over to Inkster and Cherry Hill and seen the streets where people can't even turn down because there's so much traffic.
Yeah, it is, it is.
Okay, and then the other question I have is, other new businesses that are coming to town and not really, what's the word I'm looking for?
Consistent with their plans.
Exactly, sir. So before, like, there's not like a picture in here, like what it's going to look like, so what have we put into pla, I mean, there is, but there isn't. It's a black and white drawing, it's not like, so do we have those protocols put in place now, so where our building department is going out there every week to say, "This is what they're supposed to be doing, this is what it's supposed to look like, and this is the end result," instead of it look totally different than the plan?
Yes, we've had discussions with the planning commission, sharing their concern about the issue, and we're making sure that all the process is in place with the inspection process for construction, to make sure that that's adhered to. So yes, that, those will be ensured to make sure that any kind of minor changes that occur, that are proposed, I mean, excuse me, to ensure that the plans as proposed and as, as approved by the city are the, what is actually constructed. There might be an instance where an applicant tries to do something on the weekend, but then we will have, then the city will have to enact.
We're going to up.
Action to make them, for example, remove the material and.
That's what I was going to say, actually follow the plan and not say, "Well, you already did it, so let's just try to fix it."
Provided there's not, there's enough.
I just don't.
Legal, legal standing within our ordinances, as advised by the attorneys, then yes, absolutely, we would recommend that that occur.
Okay, and then, as a doggy daycare person, I know what I had to, information I had to provide to get a special land use, and one of the questions that Councilwoman Dol asked about quantity and stuff like that, I had to give all that information beforehand. So the owner is here, does he have an idea of like how big it's going to be and how many people are going to be there, and?
Good evening, Mayor, good evening, City Council. Well, first of all, thanks for allowing us to come in, to listen to us, I know you've valuable time. To answer the question, we're thinking basically to have a bus to bring the students in, so we won't have that crazy congestion coming to town. We are in the healthcare business, we are in the medical business, and what, what we want to bring to this site, in addition to the accounting, may be medical, we haven't decided yet, but the daycare backslash education facility is very critical and important. So I think that that combination goes hand in hand. I'm sorry, I didn't get your question.
Did you have an idea of how many kids are going to be there every day? Like, he said it's limited by the state, so is your idea going to be 20 kids, or your idea is going to be 100 kids, or?
It could be 100, 140, 150 kids.
Okay.
Mayor?
Councilmember Dol.
We prompted another question, sorry. So you mentioned daycare slash educational. What's the, what are, what are the ages of these children?
Three, four, and five.
Okay, so it does top out at five, and then they would, they would leave there and go to a standardized school of some kind? Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Hey, thank you.
Thank you.
I will say, a lot of these questions, the planning commission also asked, they were pretty thorough, just like council was. So they, they did go through pretty much all of this, which I appreciate our, our planning commission on doing their, their due diligence, and they recommended to go forward, that's their opinion. So at this point, is there a motion for one of the options?
Mayor?
Mayor Pro Tem Dol.
A motion for option one, city council may decide to, it is not necessary to discuss further application for the childcare center, special land use at 6071 Middlebelt Road, recommending approval by the planning commission would then be the final proposal for this use.
Support. Or from Councilmember King? Okay, further questions or comments from table? From the public? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes seven zero. Congratulations. Okay, item three, and three to 10, is going to be Mr. Brad Omen with our DPW, and this is on aggregate purchase.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is for the approval of a three-year contract for the purchase of miscellaneous aggregate. We did receive three bids for four types of aggregate, 21AA limestone, 6040 gravel, crushed limestone meal, and washed peep hole. We use these aggregates for different jobs, water, sewer, roadwork. The two types of aggregate most commonly used is 21AA and crushed limestone. Ellsworth Industries was the lowest responsible bidder, and they have been our vendor for this material since 2010.
Is there a motion on this?
Mayor?
Councilmember Whit.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the three-year contract for miscellaneous aggregate to Ellsworth Industries of Plymouth, Michigan, in an amount not to exceed $30,000.
Support.
Or from Councilmember Carafotas? Questions, comments from table?
Mayor?
Councilmember Hughes.
Good evening, congratulations on your 40 years. A question about our previous commitment, was it set at 10,000 years before?
Pardon me?
The commitment of $10,000, was it committed in previous years, same amount?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, further comments? From the public? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Okay, this is excess material removal.
Okay, Mayor, this is for the approval of a three-year contract for the removal of excessive material. We did receive two bids for this service. The excess material are spoils from water main breaks, broken concrete, asphalt, logs and wood chips from our tree work. These materials are hauled away from the DPW yard throughout the year as needed. Ellsworth Industries was the lowest responsible bidder, and they have been our contractor for this service since 2010.
Okay, is there a motion?
Mayor?
Councilmember Whit.
I'd like to make a motion to approve a three-year contract for excess material removal to Ellsworth Industries of Plymouth, Michigan, in an amount not to exceed $195,000.
Support.
Support.
Or from Councilmember King? Comments from table?
Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Whit.
So with it being cubic yards, we haven't had any years where we've went excessively over and been charged extra. It's the set 65,000, or?
Yeah, we've always been below that.
Okay, so we don't pay what, we only pay what we send?
Correct, yes.
Further comments? From the public? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Yellow bank-run sand purchase.
Yes, Mayor, this is for the approval of a three-year contract for the purchase of yellow bank-run sand. We did receive two bids for this. We use this sand for backfill material on all our water and sewer excavations. Ellsworth Industries was the lowest responsible bidder, and they have been a vendor for this since 2010.
Motion is in order. Mayor? Councilmember King?
I move to approve a three-year contract with yellow bank-run sand to Ellsworth Industries of Plymouth, Michigan, in an amount not to exceed $100,620.
Support.
Or from, was it Councilmember Carafotas?
Yes.
Okay, further comments from table? From the public? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Okay, cold patch material purchase.
Yes, Mayor, this is for the approval of a three-year contract for the purchase of cold patch material. We did receive three bids for this. This is cold patch for patching our roads. We use about 100, 150 tons per year. As we keep moving forward with the road bond projects, that number will go down. Ajax Material Corporation was the lowest responsible bidder. Ajax has been a vendor to the city for many years.
Okay, motion is in order.
Mayor?
Mayor Pro Tem Dol.
Motion to approve a three-year contract for cold patch material to Ajax Material Corporation of Troy, Michigan, in the amount not to exceed $60,000.
Support.
Or from Councilmember Hughes? Further discussion from table?
Mayor?
Councilmember Carafotas?
I have three questions. What account does this come from? Like, what pays for this?
It'd be local major roads.
Okay, and what about the other stuff, like our sand and all that stuff? What, is that our, just our general fund stuff?
Pardon me?
The sand and all the, the other things, that's just our general fund?
No, that would be water.
That would, water, okay.
Yep.
Okay, that was it.
Further comments?
Mayor?
Councilmember Whit.
I see that there's a difference in price for pickup versus delivery. Are we typically picking up or deliver, getting it delivered?
They deliver it.
We, okay, we get it delivered, all right.
Further comments? From the public? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven, seven zero. Street seat sweeping services.
Yes, Mayor, this is for the approval of a three-year contract for street sweeping services. We did receive four bids for this. Under our stormwater permit, we are required by the state to do one citywide sweeping per year. We like to do three, spring, summer, and fall. It keeps our catch basins open for drainage and makes the city look cleaner overall. So this contract would be for three sweepings a year. Sweeping Corporation of America was the lowest bidder. They would be a new contractor to the city. After talking with them, I believe they can do the job for us. I hope they can. We just never used them before.
Who is our current vendor? Thank you.
Progressive Sweeping.
Okay, motion is in order. Mayor? Councilmember King?
I move to approve a three-year contract for street sweeping services to Sweeping Corporation of America, LLC, Seven Hills, Ohio, in an amount not to exceed $114,810.
Support.
Or from Councilmember Whit? Discussion from table?
Mayor?
Councilmember King?
I'd mentioned, I looked at the last contract, this was decent savings from our, our previous contract.
Yes.
Which is nice, so it was good to see that, even though they're new, significant savings, so.
Yes.
Mayor?
Councilmember Dol.
Is it possible to get more signage out for the residents, because we got the street sweeper, and they're in and out of the cars, it, it's really a wasted effort.
We put, it seems like we put more out every year, but still have the same response.
Is there?
Is there, um, is there a way to have, do you know where I'm going?
Yeah.
Enforcement behind this?
Yes, I believe we can either, you know, put an ordinance or a traffic control order, which were really similar to an ordinance for those times. Thinking about it now that it's brought up in this contract, I'll discuss it with the police chief and see what kind of options we have for those days to create those zones with some enforceability.
One of the problems is that the areas that were getting the sweeping done, it was the garbage day. So everybody, the garbage truck was there while the sweet street, the street sweeper was going down. Everybody had their garbage cans in the street. You can't get, you can't get it clean if everyone's got their garbage can out there. So maybe just a better coordination of scheduling.
Well, last summer, we did have a problem with our garbage pickup.
Yeah.
Which we held back with the sweeping. There was, was some hiccups, but the street sweepers always follow the garbage the day after.
Okay, so probably won't have that issue this year then with the garbage being on schedule.
Caught up, yeah.
Did you have more questions? So it was considerably a much lower bid. Do we know anybody else that this company's doing? Any cities near us?
They work mainly up in Oakland and Macomb County.
Okay. And I'll be honest, our progressive was terrible. So I feel like I'm driving on country roads. There's so much gravel in our roads right now. It seems like the last sweeping that they did, they were either full or something, but all they did was just stir up gravel. Marquette is ridiculous right now. I know our CP, our DPS went and cleaned up at Maplewood and Henry Rough with our stuff, and you guys did an amazing job compared to our sweeper. So is there something in the contract that says if, like this other company did it and they were full and it ended up with gravel all over? Is there something in our contract that says if it's not up to par that they come back and clean it up?
Yeah, we can make them come back.
Okay. Are we doing anything about the previous company with all the gravel that's all over?
I thought Progressive did an outstanding job. I did not see what you saw.
All the way down Marquette from Merriman to, to Henry Rough right now, there's four feet of gravel on, on the, the eastbound side.
They haven't swept yet this, this?
No, I'm saying it's been there since the last time that they did it. It's like that on, on Wood over by the hospital. It's like that down Maplewood, going down Maplewood right now. It's crazy. I mean, besides the potholes, but it, just right after they, they did it, there was so much gravel. So I'm glad to see that we're getting a new company for sure.
Further comments?
I just want to know if Mr. Omen would like a chair? You're gonna be up here for a little while longer.
Comments from the public. Ms. Peridore.
Does sweeping the streets help the roads stay in better condition longer?
I don't think they-
Does that have any correlation at all? Okay, because I've heard that floated. That's why I was asking that.
Just a cleaner city, right?
Right.
Yes.
Where I live, we, we have the culverts in, in the northwest area. When the street sweeper went by in the fall, you couldn't even tell anything was done. The closer you got to Merriman, it was just gravel all over the side because there, there are no curbs. So people are parking on the easement between the street and the sidewalk, and some of them have gravel filled in, some don't. Some are just parking on the grass. So basically, it didn't even look like a street, street sweeper went by. It was just a mess. James and Rush, anything that, that budded up to, to Merriman.
We don't sweep, but I asphalt roads.
I've seen them go, go down our street before.
Maybe my mistake, but.
I don't know.
Further comments? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Item eight is our construction inspection services.
Yes, Mayor, this is to approve a three-year contract for construction inspection services. We did receive nine bids for this service. This service is for the inspection and record, record keeping of our construction projects. We have a very busy construction season coming up with the road bond project, sidewalk gap project, our annual sidewalk program, lead water service replacement. The Bucelli Group was the lowest bidder, and Hennessy Engineers the second lowest. I recommend the Bucelli Group being our primary, and our secondary would be Hennessy Engineers for ad ne, as needed inspections.
Motion is in order.
Mayor.
Mayor Protem Dold.
Point of information, I have a conflict interest and must abstain from voting.
Can, can you say why? Because the council can-
I've accepted donations for my election.
Okay. Counsel, counsel can vote to what you abstain or, or not. They, he's accepted donations from one or both of the groups. So does counsel think his opinion would be, his vote would be tainted in any way?
I think it would.
Okay.
As a point of order, just a matter of procedure, if council would like to just have a vote to accept his abstaining from that, so I can put it in the record.
Okay. So the vote is to have Mayor Protem abstained from voting on this. Counsel, what would you?
I move to accept his order.
Okay.
Support.
Or from council, or, motion made by Council, Councilmember Carefotos, seconded by Councilmember Dold. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So it'd be six zero. Okay, so now a motion is in order for this contract.
Mayor.
Councilmember Dold.
A motion to approve the three-year contract with the Bucelli Group of Livonia, Michigan as our primary construction inspection services contractor in an amount of $67 per hour, and Hennessy Engineers of Southgate, Michigan as our secondary contractor for as-needed emergency construction inspection services in the amount of $82 per hour.
Support.
Support from Councilmember Witt. Further comments from the table?
Mayor.
Councilmember Carefotos.
I saw, Brad, that you put in there about the other company that was actually lower, but they bid for overtime and, and weekends. Does Bucelli and, and Hennessy charge us overtime?
No, they do not.
And do they work on the weekend?
Yep.
Perfect, thank you.
Further comments from the table? From the public. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six zero. We're almost done, Brad. Item nine is contract extension with Hard Rock Concrete.
Yes, Mayor, this is for the approval of a contract extension with Hard Rock Concrete for concrete reconstruction road bond project. We reached out to Hard Rock, and they offered to keep their unit pricing the same as last year's contract, even though concrete prices are on the rise. The roads scheduled to be done are, are Cola, Windsor to Maplewood, Chester, Cardwell to, are Cola, Sunset, Warren to Maplewood, Rush, Sunset to Henry Rough, Catherine, Harrison to Inkster. All these roads were given a very poor rating in our Pazer rating. Hard Rock has done a lot of work for us in the past and has always did a great job for us. I do have Alan Cruz here tonight also to answer any questions you might have.
I think we can take a motion, and then if we have questions for Mr. Cruz. Mr. Councilmember Witt.
I'd like to make a motion to approve a contract extension with Hard Rock Concrete of Westland, Michigan for the 2025 concrete road reconstruction projects in an amount not to exceed $3,102,012.
Support. Or from Mayor Protem Dold. Okay, questions from, or comments from the table?
I have a.
Council, Councilmember Hughes.
A quick question. I see, like, we went from a quarter mile on some of these streets and then half a mile on Catherine from Harrison to Inkster.
Yes.
And it's not just a double the price. And I would imagine is that, that's because there's different intersections, so many more intersections with the different roads that come up to that?
Yep.
Councilmember Witt.
I'm sorry if I'm restating the same thing, but like Sunset and Rush are exactly a quarter mile each, and there's a $46,000 difference. Is it, I'm assuming probably because of curbs or extra on Sunset versus?
Or maybe the width of the road. Alan, would you know this?
Yeah, Brad is correct. Good evening, Mayor and Council. It's strictly not by lineal footage price because every road is different. We're repaving the driveways. It may have more driveways, intersections. We do the whole intersection also, crosswalks, things like that. So every road is a little bit different.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure with that. Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, further comments?
Mayor.
Councilmember Carefotos.
This is coming out of the road bond money?
Yes.
Right? And no sidewalks are included, right?
No. We, we do correct the ramps at the intersection because what happens is you've got to make the intersections ADA compliant when you're paving the road. It's irresponsible to ignore ADA compliance. So if we go through the road, we have to address the ramps.
Okay.
In that particular intersection.
And then you said that about the driveway. So is this the approach that we're doing on everybody, or?
Just from the sidewalk to the road.
That's covered.
That portion of the driveway. And the reason for that is you can't get the grade exactly matching what it was. So there's a little deviation, and you don't want the lips going up the driveways or a crater.
I know that on, on one of the streets over off of Maplewood, that there was a big huge lip like that, and that was an issue before. So I'm glad that everybody's doing that over. And then if the homeowners want the rest of the driveway done, are they getting bids, can they ask for that and get bid for that from Hard Rock?
I think we handle, the, the owner has to make a deal with.
Hard Rock.
With the contractor.
But I'm saying that option's available for?
That option's available, and we, we push that aside from this because we don't want to muddy the road bond money.
Absolutely. But I'm saying, I know homeowners are gonna say, well, my street's getting done. I'd like a new driveway. Do we just contact Hard Rock?
Yes, correct.
If contractor's there, it's a lot easier to get it done.
Absolutely. I know a lot of people that live on Catherine and on, and on Rush are so happy that this is up today because.
Yes.
And then Bucelli will make sure that we're accounting for only the road project and not the full driveways when we're doing the measurements. That's the purpose of the inspection.
Thank you.
Further comments from the table? From the public. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven zero.
Mayor, I'm sorry. Did we say when this is gonna start?
We're first on the list. They're saying May.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Because it's an extension, we've already lined up early construction, and that's a benefit to the city because the longer the curing time, the better the concrete has to cure and gather its strength. So that's the advantage of this extension also with Hard Rock.
Okay, and the last question is for the city manager. We're using $3 million out of the road bond, and how much is the road bond total?
The road bond was originally $15 million. We take it out in seven and a half million dollar increments as we go, because if we don't need it, we don't need it sitting there and paying interest on it. So we take out the seven and a half million. So this will be, actually, I believe, based on the two numbers put together with the asphalt and that today, still on the first batch, and then we'll be grabbing the other seven and a half after.
For five years, right?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, item 10 is 2025 joint and crack sealing process, uh, project.
Yes, Mayor, this is to approve the contract extension with Al's Asphalt for the 2025 joint crack sealing project. Joint crack sealing is a great preventative maintenance tool for extending the life of the road. The area for this year's work will be Ford Road to Cherry Hill, Middle Belt to Inkster. Al's Asphalt was awarded the 2023 and 2024 joint crack sealing projects and has offered to extend their unit pricing for this year. Al's Asphalt has done a lot of work for us in the past and have always done a great job.
Okay, thank you. Motion is in order.
Mayor.
Councilmember Hughes.
Make a motion to approve the contract extension with Al's Asphalt of Taylor, Michigan for 2025 joint and crack sealing project in an amount not to exceed $300,000. Support.
Or from Councilmember Dold. Comments from the table?
Mayor.
Councilmember Carefotos.
To be clear, this is road bond money too, right?
Yes.
Further comments from the table? From the public. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Thanks, Brad. You can go sit down now.
Thanks, Brad. Lots of hard work.
Okay, item 11 is Rules of Procedure Amendment. Mr. Smith.
Good evening again, Mayor and Council. So the second item I have tonight in front of you is an amendment to our council rules and procedure. It kind of stems from recent court decisions regarding rules of procedure in other jurisdictions. One was a school board. The backstory on that is there was a incident with a firearm at the school. Residents came to express their opinions regarding the district's handling in response to it, and certain members basically shouted down the opposing viewpoint of how they handled it. Went to court. Court sided with the residents. More locally to us is the situation that occurred in East Point a couple of years ago, where they had a provision on the books where they prohibited comments from the public directed at any specific individual on council or the mayor. They enforced that during their meetings. It was challenged under First Amendment rights, basically saying they were only allowing comment that was agreeing with them. Court sided with the residents. The city of East Point had to pay $80,000 in a settlement and apologized to those who were censored by Mayor and Council. So whenever we see these things and see a chance for, to cut down a potential future liability, I say we should make that amendment. So basically what I've done with the proposed amendment here is I've taken out the provision under the disorderly conduct at meetings, basically saying speaking vulgarities, name-calling, personal attacks, because that is a subjective, you know, what, what is the vulgarity? Who determines that? Basically, it could, one of the cases, they said their provision was in no antagonistic, antagonistic comments. And it's like, well, who determines who is antagonized by what comment? So, and then we also took out the no public comments may include defaming or slanderous personal attacks on any member of city council or members of the city staff. Just because it's, you know, just because we may be offended by it doesn't preclude us the ability to take away the First Amendment right to do that. What I did put in there is what, where courts have upheld, city defenses, is a note in there about a true threat. And I use the exact definition that courts have used in determining a true threat, which is threatening intent to commit an act of unlawful violence to a particular individual or group of individuals. In all the court cases I've come across, those type of things can be prohibited. But we did keep in there about, you know, being disruptive at the meeting, going overtime, speaking off subject. It's just a lot of the subjective, you know, where is this, you know, determined who's offended by the comments from the public. So if council and mayor see fit, I'd submit that amendment for approval.
Mayor.
Councilmember Dold.
I'd like to motion to approve the proposed amendment to city council rules of procedure, amending language of, of section 2.110, public participation at meetings, and section 2.120, disorderly conduct at meetings as proposed.
Support.
Support from Councilmember Witt. Further comment from the table?
Mayor.
Go ahead, Councilmember Dold.
Now we're speaking in tandem. I just-
I just wanted to thank the city clerk and city manager for looking into this as quickly as you did. We don't need to, you know, people have a right to say what they want to say, so.
I was going to say the same thing. Everybody has a right to free speech and if someone wants to get up there and say, you guys are doing a sucky job, they should be able to say it. And so this was long overdue, so thank you Brian, thanks Tim.
Further comments from table?
I'd like to echo the same thing. All of us up here got thick skin. We can't please you all. I want to hear what you got to say whether I like it or not. Thank you.
Further comments from table? From the public? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seven zero. Item 12 is the amended, we're going to amend the city council meeting schedule, April 7th. We will be lacking a quorum due to some council members and not, four council members not being here, so we will not have a quorum. So we are proposing moving it to April 14th.
Mayor.
Councilmember Hughes.
I'd like to make a motion to amend the 2025 city council meeting schedule to move the scheduled Monday, April 7th, 2025 at 7:00 PM meeting to Monday, April 14th, 2025 at 7:00 PM due to a lack of quorum availability on Monday, April 7th.
Support. Support from Councilmember King. Comments from table? From the public? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Item 13 is our professional service agreement. I'll leave it at that. Mr. Gibbons.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As we discussed last meeting, our treasurer unfortunately is departing for reasons beyond the city's control and understandably, but we approved a plant morang gap coverage to assist us with accounting, but as they are also our auditor, there are certain functions that as a third party, they need to be removed from. So as we did last time over the summer, we will be, need to engage two firms to perform all of our accounting needs and our finance needs. Myself and community development director Miller met with Manor Costranen. They are performing these services for a number of municipalities in Michigan. We have some confidence in their ability and had a good meeting. I believe they can help us get from point A to point B, from getting one treasurer to another. And this is sort of as needed, but I believe, you know, they'll play an important role in our finance and accounting in the short term. And that's why I'm requesting an approval of their contract tonight.
Okay, motion is in order.
Mayor.
Go ahead.
Councilmember King.
I move to approve the attached professional service agreement and engagement letter with Manor Costranen to provide gap and county services.
Support. Support from Mayor Protem Dole. Further comments from table?
Mayor.
Councilmember Witt.
I don't have the previous paperwork in front of me, but is this similar pricing to what, was it Woodhill that we had before?
I believe the pricing is similar, but it is a very competitive market for finance directors and these agencies right now, as there's a deficiency in the amount of people wanting to do that job for municipalities anymore, the private sectors really. So ultimately, yes, we believe the market rates are consistent in this contract, but also the competence is right in line with that as well.
And then was this not bid due to the severity?
This is a professional services contract, so like the city attorney, like that, it's outside of the normal bid process.
Was it something that we didn't go to Woodhill for having previous experience with it?
We're confident that it'd be wise to move on to Manor Costranen.
Okay.
Okay, further comments from table? From the public? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Item 12, yeah, item 12 is other business and we do have a discussion about the Radcliffe Center Committee. Mr. Gibbons.
Mayor and Council, I had the conversation, you know, with much discussion over going ons and the plan forward at Radcliffe. I think it's important that a couple of members of council group up with our Parks and Rec Commission to really discuss, you know, all of the details going forward on Radcliffe and where we plan on, particularly in expending the remaining ARPA money and, you know, if we have any left of the HUD money after the HVAC is complete, which is a strong possibility we will. And that council has a voice that can be heard within a committee along with the Parks and Rec Commission and that we can just facilitate a lot more communication and understanding that both the two members of the committee from the Parks and Rec Commission can bring back to their board and then our council members can bring back to this board. And I just think it's useful, especially given, you know, as much interest as there is in that particular topic, that it's best just to bring everybody to the table and get both, both boards in a room with our decision-making process.
Okay, and what I'd like to do is after the meeting or sometime tonight or when council individually decides if they might be interested, let me know and I will appoint to, to go to the, on that committee and then report back to council as, as the meetings move on. So give you guys some time to think about it and preferably by tonight or tomorrow. And I think they're planning on a meeting Wednesday, so I don't want, I don't want opinions now or, you know, get back with me later, tonight or tomorrow, please.
I have a question.
Yes.
Since this is a committee that we have never, we haven't done anything like this before, is that something that the mayor gets to appoint?
I mean, it's.
It's a regular, I don't know. I was told yes, but it's a committee.
I mean, it's a non-existing committee, so procedurally if council wanted to discuss, pick their two and vote upon it, then you could, but there's no, you know, established criteria or protocol for putting together.
Okay, well, what's, what's council's wish? Doesn't really matter to me.
Nobody has a.
So I'd like to see council get together and decide amongst ourselves who's going
to sit on the, on the board or commission.
Procedurally, whatever council's pleasure is.
Yeah, that's fine. We, we would have to do it out, out here now then. So.
I would like to be on it.
I would like to be on it.
Same here.
So we got one, two, three. I don't know. Councilmember Dole, did you want to be on it too?
Mm-hmm. I'm okay with Mayor Protem and actually with Councilmember Carefotis. They have both been very active with Radcliffe since we purchased the building, even before Mayor Protem got on council, so I don't have a problem with those two.
Okay, anybody else want to be on it or have opinions on?
Well, I'd like to suggest Councilmember Carefotis and King.
Anybody else? Do we vote on?
So what I would do is if anyone would like to make a motion of who they would like to nominate for the Radcliffe Committee, you know, make a motion nominating these individuals, we'll take a vote and.
Mayor, since there's only three of us, why doesn't it just be all three of us? Does it have to be two?
Yeah, I, there was no real, anything behind the numbers other than just adding, so.
Who's interested?
I think there's nothing wrong with three.
We can do three.
Yeah, we can do three. We talked about three, went back and forth, so two or three, that's fine.
I was going to say, as long as it's not a quorum.
No, and three's not a quorum.
Voting on anything anyway.
And this is really more of just, you know, information being brought back to each board, so I think three's just fine.
Okay.
Agreed.
I'd like to make a motion to have Mayor Protem, Dole, Councilmember King, and Councilmember Carefotis as the council's committee for Radcliffe Center.
Support.
Support from Councilmember Dole. Okay, further comments? From the public?
Yes, I have a question.
Come up to the podium, please.
I have a question. This committee sounds great, it really does, but is it only for the commission? Can you bring in other people that aren't on the council?
Like residents?
There will be a couple of members from the Parks and Rec Commission. I think our Parks and Rec Director, our three council members, and possibly one or two other people that are involved in some of the activities that will be going on.
Yeah, because I'm part of the Commission on Aging and that's a big part of the Rec Center, so I'm kind of interested in this.
Well, right now I don't think we're taking any other outside board members or from the public. It's going to be.
That's why I asked if it's only for the council members.
It's going to be council, Parks and Rec Commission members, and then I think Erica from our Parks and Rec Director.
I love Erica.
And then possibly one or two other people from the Parks and Rec.
So who makes this decision?
Parks and Rec picked their people and council just picked theirs.
I, I think what she's asking is.
I'm sorry.
Is it an open meeting where public will be allowed to attend or can another commission also sit on the board is what she's looking for.
Right, because it's this aging, it's the Commission on Aging and Radcliffe is all about seniors and Erica senior, so maybe that's why she's asking, because they think they should have some input or at least know what's going on there.
Yeah, something to say.
I don't know that we got that far in discussions.
No, I think getting all of the members from both boards into the same room to decide kind of maybe where they want to go forward with this and where they want to get input. But I know they will be taking input from more than just the board, but, you know, getting those outside perspective. I know there was some discussion about involving.
You'd want to.
Would it be a public meeting, Tim?
You know, I haven't discussed that with Erica, other than I know they were planning on meeting with the Parks and Rec Commission. That's why I wanted to get our committee added, our members added, so that that input can be given. So I will express this to Erica and let her know that the Commission on Aging is looking to add some input and then see, make sure she can facilitate that, one way or the other, just to make sure that the Commission on Aging's opinions in this matter are taken into consideration.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Hold on.
Do you know how many members from the Parks Commission is being invited to it?
There are two.
Two? I know originally you guys were going to have two here. Are you going to change that for the Parks Commission too or?
I think it'd be up to the board for the Parks Commission, but ultimately this isn't a voting, this is only informational, it's only for the purposes of being able to bring back to each board what's going on, what the plans are and some assisting with input.
Mr. Jones.
Mike Jones, we have, I just have three quick items. One I want to thank everybody.
Wait, we're on, we're on the Radcliffe Center Committee.
Oh, I thought you were.
Not public comment yet. Nope, not yet.
Okay.
Councilmember King, you had something?
Yeah, I was just going to mention, just for awareness, our Parks and Rec Commission consists of nine members, so I guess I do like the idea of maybe having a couple more. So it was a good representation of that commission. There's seven of us, there's three, maybe it should be four, you know, Parks and Rec to represent that group, since that is their kind of primary goal is to handle Parks and Rec.
Absolutely, and they.
They're residents, by the way. For those who don't know, they're volunteer residents. They volunteer their time.
And they fall under the purview of, you know, that board, so they could certainly add and, you know, decide how many members they'd like to have in that, absolutely.
Okay.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, all in favor on our three members?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that passes seven zero. Okay, item 13, public comment. Come on up, Mr. Jones.
Three, three quick items. One, I'd like to thank the community for their support of our eighth annual Great Pig Race on March 8th. I think it was, as far as I know, it was a great success and we appreciate your support. Two, I'd like to make everybody aware that the Garden City Lions will be meeting at Radcliffe tomorrow night at 6:30 and all are welcome. And three, the Garden City High School Key Club is having their empty bowl dinner this Wednesday and I believe that we're asking the public to, to be there by 6 o'clock and we appreciate any support you can give them. Thank you.
That's at the high school, right?
It is at the high school, yes.
High school cafeteria. Mike, could you maybe explain what the empty bowl banquet is?
Volunteers provide soup of various concoctions so that you really don't come there and pay for dinner and not get something to eat. We also have salad and a couple of other condiments. We also have basket raffles from volunteers and the money goes to support Kids Against Hunger, which will be, I'll be talking more about next month.
Hey, thank you. Did you want to add anything to that, Councilmember Dole?
Nope, just come on up. It's a, it's a good fundraiser, a lot of good soup. It's pretty much all you can eat till the soup, as long as the soup lasts, so.
Okay, very good. Any other public comment? Please state your name and.
This is Linda Skoroff of Garden City. I know you people say we have to move on about what's happened with the budget and everything else in Radcliffe, but it's kind of hard to go on when we got screwed so bad. And one question I have is will we ever get, or will it ever be repealed, the 1.5 mil that sort of got snuck in during COVID that we, we're told that it could easily be removed and obviously you, I doubt if that's ever going to happen. Also, have you learned any lessons in this whole thing as far as checks and balances? I would have assumed that there would, there were audits going on. And if there were, was anything verified as far as how all this stuff got spent and snuck in and everything else? Obviously the treasurer didn't do crap, obviously the CM didn't do anything. And I guess as a taxpayer, I want to make sure that this isn't going to happen again. So when you have an audit, when you have a CPA come in or who's ever going to be doing this, that there is that checks and balance. And I don't care if it's against the mayor, if it's against the CM, to make sure that everything is going in the right account and everything is accountable for and everything is legal and on the up and up. And I think that we as taxpayers deserve an explanation as you come to these findings to let us know how all of this happened and to ensure us that it's not going to happen again. Also, Mr. Mayor, you recently went on a conference that obviously none of us knew about and I was kind of surprised at the cost of this and the time that it was. And if you could elaborate on what you learned from this conference, since we paid for it, we would appreciate it.
I will do that shortly. Any other comments?
Scott from Iraqi, James Street. I was going to elaborate on how the city is falsifying inspection documents, but since we're talking about sidewalks, we'll start there. It's interesting because last meeting you had mentioned that your son was disabled and it's nice to have sidewalks to walk down and you addressed parking just a few moments ago in regards to one of the new businesses. This is what it looks like right before I left, when I pulled out of my driveway, when I backed out of my driveway. Lieutenant Hall here, he's in charge of the ordinance division. We got Sergeant Lewis over there, we had, here's the chief of police. Michael was here earlier, contacted Tim Gibbons, Stacy Carefotis, Kim Dole, Mark Jacobs. Still waiting on Jeff's comment from two weeks ago, but he did have a chance to go on Facebook and comment on mine. So I'm just curious how this is happening. In addition, this is your inspection report. It's interesting because it says no parking of vehicles on James Street, no parking of vehicles between Middle Belt Road and sidewalk, middle belt travel lanes, storage of wrecked, licensed, junked, or inoperable vehicles. This is as I was leaving my home after I took these pictures, right here. And then the next one is an engine sitting on the sidewalk. So there's where your money's going. No one's doing anything. I've been talking about this for 10 months. Lewis knows, I sent him pictures, he would have to know. You definitely know. You call, he gave a ticket to the collision shop on 925, which I have those reports here. You actually called me while I was standing on my porch talking to him. I have all this on recording. I have all this on recording. Dominic King was at my house. He noticed that all this stuff, all the stuff at the collision shop, nobody does anything. That's where your money's going, right down the drain, someone's pocket, well, conferences. So what's the problem? Because I ask questions, these are not hard questions, I'm reading your paperwork, I'm taking pictures. I'm reading your paperwork, word for word, and just attaching pictures and asking questions, yet you all sit silent and nobody can answer. It must be nice for you to walk your kid down the street, or, I apologize for that, for you and your child to be able to go down the street, because I can't even see backing out of my driveway. It must be nice for you to say something about parking and be so concerned, but nobody seems to be concerned about everybody else. I mean, everybody on the block has called.
15 seconds.
And I didn't even get to the paint issue and the lying and falsifying inspection reports. I know it's true, 100% certain it is true, and I can back that up. I guess you should have done some homework, but you're an attorney, right, Tim?
That's right.
You're a citizens attorney, so.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else's public comment? Any other public comments? Okay, city managers report.
I have nothing tonight, thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Smith.
Nothing this evening.
Mayor Protem Doold.
Yeah, I did have the opportunity to go to the Great Pig Race, which was fantastic time, as well as Police and Fire Department hockey game, excellent job, I'm glad they won. I am concerned about the guy that got slammed in the wall, though, is he okay?
Mike, yeah, he's good.
Okay. Scott, I'm just going through my emails, I have not received an email from you.
I didn't send one, you told me you hadn't made it last evening, you contacted me, I had to send you an email. I assume that you were gonna respond to.
You said I didn't answer your email.
Well, I was referring to other emails, I'm sorry.
Okay, this is, that's all I have.
Okay, Councilmember Hughes.
I too attended the Great Pig Race and was, I was very happy to, to talk with a lot of the residents and people who are there, very, people were very supportive, you know, it's a lot of fun. So next year, if you want to have a great time, come on, come on down. March 7th?
Okay, that it. Thank you. Councilmember Witt?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Councilmember King.
As I mentioned, attended the pig race, it was a great, great event. Those who have not attended yet, definitely mark your calendars for next year, it's worthwhile. Also, congratulations, Brad, for 40 years, it's awesome. And then just regarding Scott's comment, during my campaign trail, I did visit with him, I'm open to visit any resident, any, you know, any issues, bring, I definitely want to hear them, just like Jeff mentioned earlier, yeah, it's important to mention what concerns you have, if you're upset with us, or whatever it is, and that's all I have today.
Thank you. Councilmember Doold.
Just a couple of quick things. First, everybody's saying what a great pig race it was, but nobody's congratulating our winner. Sorry, guys, but it was the fire department. So congratulations to them, and Brad, I congratulate you for sticking it out this long, hope we get another 40 out of you. And finally, I just want to say, you know, Scott, you know that you and I corresponded quite a bit, quite a few months ago. I tried to help you in numerous ways.
These are part of things in the capital, I mean.
Listen, listen, no, I just want to let you know that I did get an email, tomorrow morning, Eagle is doing a webinar for odors in your community, how to deal with them. If you want, I'll send, I'll forward that information to you, you can probably watch it. I know you've dealt with Eagle, I've dealt with Eagle.
No, it's not, this isn't back and forth.
No, I know, I know, he commented, I believe that I'm, you know, I'm allowed to comment back.
Yes, you are.
I'm not trying to go back and forth with you, I want to help you, I want to help any resident that needs help. I don't know what else to do at this point to help you. I have to, I have to defer it to the city manager and our police department.
And just, just for the right, the manor is in court, we issued citations, it's before the judge, ultimately, the court decides these things, the city doesn't get to dictate these things, so.
Litigation is hard for us to comment on or get involved. Anything else, Councilmember?
One last thing, happy birthday to our youngest grandchild, Lana, tomorrow.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Karafotis.
I just have a couple of quick things. Obviously, Brad, congratulations, I hope you do stick around as long as you can, you are appreciated more than you know. I also want to comment about Mr. Miller's thing, that there's the Hometown Heroes banners, there are a couple left. If you have a veteran in your family and you want his banner to be put up, please contact him. It is a great honor to drive down the road and see your family member on a banner in our city, and then afterwards, the family gets the banner. The other thing I wanted to say is that, you know, for the past five years, we were told that our city was in the best financial shape ever, and then this year, we find out there is a budget deficit. So a lot of residents have come forward and asked me, where's the money going? And we've had residents come to our podium and say, where's the money going? I want you to know that we're working on that diligently, our city manager is, is looking and investigating and finding those things out, and we will be transparent, we will say, this is what we found, so it's coming, please don't think that we're not being transparent, but in order to find out where everything was spent, it takes time. The other thing I want to say to Linda, that lessons have been learned about all these things, and that this summer, our city manager has said that we will spend time updating protocols and possibly putting things in place to where we need a super majority of council to vote if money gets taken out of this account or this account, so it's just not a pass-through, so that there's more eyes on spending, so it is coming. And that's it.
Okay, thank you. I just have a couple of things. One, obviously, congratulations, Brad, again. I want to thank the Garden City Police Department, Lieutenant Micah, and the rest of the guys, and the Westland Fire Department. It was a very good game, raised almost $3,000, going toward, half of it going toward Garden City charities. Great game, good event, I wish I could have played, but I couldn't, might have been better for you. But, but on the bright side, I do not have to wear a Westland jersey for a council meeting, and I will get a free meal from their mayor at some point in time, so bonuses for me. To answer your question about a conference, last conference I went to was in January, so I'm assuming you think I was at a conference the last couple of weeks when I was missing in action at the council table? I try to keep my personal life and private medical issues to myself, but I also have a responsibility that you guys voted me to sit at this table. Since 2015, I've missed a handful of meetings that I've never missed two in a row. Having said that, I do want to thank Mr. Gibbons, who I was in contact with some of the time while I was out. I want to thank Mayor Protem Doold for filling in for me, short notice at the first meeting, you know, and then the rest of council and residents for respecting my privacy and not blowing up my phone, I was off my phone for about two weeks. So I'm gonna keep it simple, I'm not gonna get into all the details, but I had my gallbladder removed, along with some other issue, some other issues. I am recovering, but that's where I was for two weeks. I wasn't at a conference, I wasn't out partying, I wasn't doing non.
Talking about the conference.
January was the mayor's conference down in Washington, and it was networking, and I did bring back some stuff for the fire department, some grant opportunities that I passed along to Mr. Gibbons, and some other, I think to Parks and Rec, I picked up some grant opportunities. So I try to bring back something every time I go, some meetings, conferences are better than others, but that's, that's what I did in January, that was a three or four day conference. So hopefully, I answered your question, and I answered why I was gone for a couple of weeks, and again, I appreciate the privacy and the respect for, for my, my privacy. There are people still, friends and family, that do not know where I was for two weeks, and that's how I am. So having said all that, no further business, this meeting is adjourned.